Congratulations to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
Good morning, Harlan.
As you know, here that we need to amend our agenda to add, uh, D E number six, lateral A one, and group A estimate number six to the N one escalator.
I'll make a motion to approve our genuine fat addition to it.
I'll second.
Second, in the other discussion, not on paper.
Aye.
Both, motion for amendment to the last meeting, any additional corrections?
You want the program to move as per?
I'll second.
Second, on paper.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Anyone from the general public have anything?
Camera's working yet?
Camera's working, there was just not uploaded. We're trying. There's two of them that are ready to go out there and we're not sure. So I thought they were all there, but all since now I found with two of them. I'll go back and upload them again.
You're up past meetings, you got any recordings of those?
Yes. We've got, um, everything's from the eleventh on, August eleventh on. And that's what we're uploading to the website.
So what does it cost to get?
Um, you can get them right online, you don't have to pay for them at all. We'll go right on our website and they'll be there. Hopefully this week. If he gets that, when he bugs worked out and I get everything else loaded up, so it'll be, hopefully this week.
Good. All right, thank you.
One more little hurdle to jump.
John, you want to come up?
Sure. And Iowa Grange District Association?
Good morning, everyone.
How are you?
Pleasure to be with you all again. Um, when I started with IDDA back in two thousand and one, believe it or not, um, one of the things I told the board is that I would visit each of our members every year and I have continued to do that and it's, uh, turned into one of the favorite things I do each year is, uh, come out and get to meet with you all face to face. I think it gives a face to the organization and allows you to know what's going on on a firsthand basis as opposed to just sit in my office and send out newsletters. Um, first of all, you know, we're gearing up for the legislative session, uh, be here before we know it, so we're starting to look now at, uh, what, what kind of issues we're going to take into the legislature. Um, I know the, the programs that's important in this county is the ag drainage well program. Um, and, uh, I'm sure all of you know that we lost the funding for that last year. Um, the funding was, uh, put into a, uh, a bill, uh, that went through the legislature the final day of the session, um, contained a number of different funding issues, ag drainage wells included, uh, went to the governor's office and, um, the governor and legislature ended up disagreeing over, um, the source of that money and how that money was going to be used and the governor ended up vetoing that bill. Um, so for the second time now in about three years, the ag drainage well program has come to a close, what we hoped to be a temporary close. Um, so we know that one of the things on the agendas we had in the next year is getting that program started again, uh, and getting a secure source of funding, uh, into that program. Um, and that was, um, Secretary Morey, um, about two or three weeks ago now, uh, to talk about funding issues as we head into the session and I, I basically wanted to let Secretary Morey know that, you know, IDDA is here to help you if, um, if you were able to, um, see fit to, you know, provide or at least recommend, uh, some increased funding for somebody's programs that we watch, we would, IDDA would certainly be supportive through our efforts in the legislature. Um, on the ag drainage well program, uh, he seemed to be indicating that he was going to ask for additional funds. He said, because basically now we've got a year to make up. Um, so I don't know if he's going to ask for two years' worth of funding, but I think he's going to ask for an appropriation above what has been available in past years. So, um, we'll see what that goes. Uh, all indications are coming into the, the year that money's going to be tight again in the legislative appropriations process. Um, tax, uh, tax revenues are not coming in as at the expected level, so that's going to create some budgetary issues. So it's, it's going to be difficult to keep current programs funded at their current level, much less start a, start a program back up. So we'll, we'll have our work cut out for us. Um, we're also, um, you know, actively working on the, uh, agenda for the annual, annual meeting, uh, coming up first Friday in December. Uh, I think, uh, we've got the agenda pretty well sketched out. Um, I'll have that out in the next newsletter, which should be coming out in the next two to three weeks, uh, along with the registration forum, so we hope to see, uh, a lot of you in Fort Dodge first Friday in December. Um, the other thing that we've spent a lot of time on and continue to spend a lot of time on is, uh, the proposal from, uh, the Environmental Protection Agency that would, uh, greatly expand the jurisdiction of the EPA overwaters in the United States. Um, IDDA hosted a special conference on this, as most of you know, back in August and we got a very good reception to that conference. Um, the public comment period on that rule is still open. Uh, the comment closes on October twentieth, um, so if, if you have, or have not commented on the rule yet, I would urge you to do so. Um, Harlan and I attended a meeting, um, a week ago today in Des Moines, uh, with a number of groups that were talking about this proposal. Um, the meeting was chaired by the Iowa Home Brothers Association, but we also had the governor there, the lieutenant governor there, secretary of agriculture there, and the, uh, director of the DNR in attendance. And they are, to a person, all very concerned about this proposal and what it would do to Iowa. Um, Secretary Morey and the comments he made at the meeting, you know, stressed again how vitally it is, important it is for people to make comment and to get their comments sent to the EPA, uh, expressing concerns about this rule. His comment was poured on. Uh, and that's what we hope our membership will do. I mean, I'll get another email out, uh, probably later this week here reminding counties, um, about the importance of the rule and reminding them that the comment period closes October twentieth and urging everybody to, to get comments in. Um, I, you know, Secretary Morey believes that, uh, there is hope, uh, that he, you know, he feels that EPA did not clearly understand the impact of some of the things that they were proposing and, um, probably would do it differently if they had to do it over, but that's, that's not our option at this point. Um, you know, they, they use the word in the rule, significant nexus, and that's the terminology that they're hanging on to. So if a body war, if you have a body of water that has a significant nexus or a connection to water that flows into the waters in the United States, you're potentially going to be covered by the new rule of the Clean Water Act and, uh, you know, I can't remember whether it was that Monday meeting or not, or I've attended so many meetings on this for another meeting, but, you know, personally they remarked that significant nexus is a, is a big bus that you can drive through anywhere in terms of language. The lawyers are just going to have a field day with that. Um, this is a bad deal. I mean, it could put you all, the strange trustees, in the situation of having to get Clean Water Act permits to do drainage repairs. Clean Water Act permit, you talked to Sean Heschman, who works for Idols, they had to get Clean Water Act permits for some of the crap projects and he said it was a twelve to fifteen month process and very costly. I mean, it would affect, effectively, you know, grind drainage to halt in terms of repairs and improvements. Uh, and maybe that's the goal, I don't know. Maybe that's the goal. Um, so we're working very closely on that, watching it very closely. Uh, comment period will close October twentieth. Um, wondering what happens in that time then is, uh, what's supposed to happen is that EPA is then supposed to review the comments and make adjustments to the rule, you know, according to the comments received. Whether there'll be adjustments made, whether the rule will be withdrawn, nobody knows. Um, this is going to end up with the courts, no matter what happens. And, um, you know, you look at the initial congressional authorization, EPA, and what Congress authorizes EPA to do, and I don't think there's any doubt, I'm not an attorney, but I've read the language, I don't think there's any, any doubt the EPA is vastly overstepping their congressional grant of authority by what they're doing here. This, they're doing things with this expansion of authority that Congress has never authorized and Congress has never intended. Uh, they're trying to write legislation to the rules process and that's not a good thing. Um, so I don't know if you all have commented or not, but if you haven't, uh, please take the time to do so. Probably the easiest way to do it is just to go to the Farm Bureau website and do it. I found it sort of interesting that back when we had our meeting in August, that if you went to the EPA website, epa.gov, the ability to comment on the rule was very easy. They had it banner right up on the website and you just click there and that took you right and you could fill out the form and a comment on the rule right there. I went to the EPA website the other day and I couldn't find anything on waters in the United States comment. Took me about ten minutes of search to find out where the comment period was. So they have, they have buried that on the EPA website. Um, so if you want to, I mean, if you want to take the time to go to the EPA website and, and work your way, do some searches and work your way into it, you can. The easiest thing to do is just go to the Farm Bureau website and, and go through it that way.
I think Farm Bureau has forms laying in the office, do you think?
Yes, that's correct. Yep. So, so, hey, any questions or comments?
John, I have a question.
Sure.
Earlier you talked about the funding for, uh, ag wells. Do you foresee a time when that will become non-existent, getting out funding? Is it going to keep every year going on and you think they're going to eventually shut that off? I mean, we're pretty, pretty high with well in this county that we're concerned about.
Well, the last estimate I saw in terms of the, the amount of money, you know, if you wanted to close all the ag drainage wells that we left out there, how much money would that take? And the last estimate I saw out of Idols was pretty speculative, of course, because they haven't had engineering on some of these, but the guesstimate is about, you know, nine to eleven million dollars. Um, you know, which I've been getting funded of a million and a half bucks a year, so if you can keep the funding so stable, which we haven't been able to do, if we can keep the funding so stable, we'll have this job done in a reasonable period of time. Uh, the problem is, you know, one year the legislature cut it off, we had a dispute between the House and the Senate over the funding model and the government to conference committee and they ended up taking the funding out, so it never got to the governor's office. I think that was two years ago. And this year we had the legislative agreement that we needed to do the ag drainage well program and we got the bill to the governor's office and the governor vetoed the bill. Um, so what we need to do is to get a stable source of funding of a million and a half, two million bucks a year, and if we can keep that in place for five, six, seven years, we'll be done.
If, if, if.
Yeah, if, 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 it's on the money.
Well, one thing I thought with the, uh, presentation the Farm Bureau did with the slides at that meeting last week, he showed the, the rain gutter on your house, the flow line, the high water mark, all of those things, all into the EPA.
Yeah.
I mean, if they get ridiculous, they could control your gutter on the house.
Yeah, that's right.
Twice and they'll go to court. It's going to be on the ground after this. Yeah.
But, uh, you know, if these things go through, it's going to make it very difficult to maintain the, uh, infrastructure we have for drainage.
That's right, even the maintenance. Just running on maintenance.
The Farm Bureau gave, uh, the governor, uh, photos of the counties, one of them happened to be Wendell Baker County and then the other one where the lieutenant governor's from and Clay County where Morey's from. So my comments when they went around the table was, uh, take a look at that and see how much land is, particularly in North Central Iowa, is affected by this. And the governor kind of took a note of that, that Wendell Baker County does have a lot of drainage, so, uh, it is an issue that's going to affect us. And we're doing everything we can, whether, I guess I was impressed with the diverse group of people around that table. I mean, you had the limestone industry there.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just people you wouldn't think would be involved with this issue.
Texas, all, don't expect this guy to culture.
Yeah. Yep.
Cities, treatment plants, the whole bit.
Okay. Any last comments? Any update on, uh, drainage district one fourteen, that's a railroad?
No, not at this, I don't have anything, no.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess we got time here reading down to tax, the big man, five parcels and remakes.
I got the letter from the city asking me to bring this to your meeting and after they acquired a property in February of two thousand and fourteen and they're just planning the current year taxes, abated until it transfers to their exempt status. From what I looked up, all five parcels, total one hundred and eighty-eight dollars intact.
This is property that House Guy had and he sold it to the city of Remake and they put up a city maintenance shop, so that's why it's being taken care of this way.
It was a private, yeah, party that owned it.
I'd make a motion to debate the taxes on the five parcels in Remake.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, is, uh, the one that owned this, uh, one of the council members?
I don't know.
He is now. I don't know that he was at the time of the sale. He might have been. Not sure.
Oh, he is on the letterhead there. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, he's one of the council members. They looked, we sold a piece of property, they had an offer to buy one, was considered more, more money and hell offered this to him for like very low amount, so he basically kind of got away from mowing it and gave it, got it to the city so they could utilize it and it's a good location for the city shed.
Any other questions or discussion? So we're debating, uh, the one eighty-eight plus five?
Yeah.
In order?
Correct.
Any other discussion, on paper?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Uh, really early for drainage, I suppose. You can do the quick claim, you don't need to all hear for that. You want to take any other quick claim needs for the land and roadway?
Remember back in, let me look here, January two thousand and fourteen, we had a resolution that we approved and this was part of that roadway, uh, purple roadway from seventy-three that had been abandoned and, uh, Mr. Erickson wanted a quick claim or something on it, his portion of it, so I don't know if he saw.
It's on by the drag ship, right?
Correct.
Did you have that other map that tells you?
I don't know.
Does that feel better now?
Not necessarily.
You know, he just, uh...
Yeah.
He probably wants something because there probably been a farm, I can't, it's my, this and that, so, you know. I've been up there a couple times. Should not be a problem.
Should be a problem.
Was there some concern, is it a portion of this to get landlocked or not?
Um, like that's all, I refer to the county attorney.
I don't see it going to be landlocked and it's, this area, it was, it's been treated as, I can't remember the guy's name, as his land and it was something that was supposed to be done a while ago and it just hasn't been done. So it, I don't see that anybody's going to be landlocked and, uh, it...
Part of this is an edge of the drag ship, right?
Right.
And then the additional part is just a rough road with two fences on it.
Right.
So they're just establishing that they have quick claim on this, on their half that's on their half where the road was. From the road center, the road goes back to the west, to the south.
Yeah, there's no top of the road, but...
South, yeah, okay.
This was something that was, I, I think supposed to go a while back and it...
Right.
They never, they haven't cleaned it up and he got, he got the, uh, tax statement that taxed him on it, so he wanted something done.
I'm sure they're going to want to clean it up and establish the boundary and then go ahead and farm the part.
So I think, my hope is this will be by next year, it'll be mostly cleaned up and they'll either farm it or, or do something else.
At least with that half.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other motion?
Well, it looks like John thinks it's all right. I'd move the way off our chairman to sign a quick rate deal for the abandoned right away roadway.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second. Any other discussion? Not on paper?
Aye, aye.
Both, motion carried. Okay, any other motion on the drainage?
Uh-huh.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, on paper?
Aye.
Both, motion carried.
See the ladder? Now, children, you know, there's two boxes, every bit of that, how is it made?
Yeah.
I'm not even sure that that is, I think it's three person. I can't even have that.
That corn is pretty good.
So they make those corns, too?
Yeah, mother made the corns.
And what did it cook?
Yeah, they were...
They make those corns?
I think the gallon of corn, you know, bank or even, uh, I can't think of her name.
What do I got, my share?
Good morning, Mr. Breeze. How you doing?
Yeah, nothing else to do now, you're tired.
Yeah, he's looking good, too, isn't he? Stay home, get insult against you.
(laughing). Trish must have got held up. Six years, isn't he? Is that good? Well, he's got it, he should be.
He must be with the pills right now.
Oh, he's talking, I hope that it's bleeding or something.
I don't want to...
Right, so the kids on this weekend, they need to...
Uh, just for a short time, Brandon come home for the afternoon.
Oh, they're busy.
Yeah, she had to move after the shower, she'll be in Minneapolis.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, she's going to be up there now, so, nine weeks.
Sure is.
Yeah, her inter-rotation where they call, I don't know. And, um, she'll get done the week before the wedding.
No kidding?
Yeah, so...
Yep.
She'll be probably making a few road trips to Minneapolis and then go down, back down.
The others can do that, okay.
Good morning.
They don't think none of it's...
Second, might need to make more of these.
Yeah, we're going to make some copies.
I'm going to be giving you just summaries of cost breakdown for this, for one twenty-five, um, half inch coefficient and one inch coefficient.
You want more, copy this, maybe?
Uh, here, I, let's see. I got several extras. I think we'll need more.
Trying to remember what...
Yeah.
Good question.
We're all aware of the bid letting we had, um, last Monday, um, prices came in higher than anticipated. Mike Borland, the Iowa Department of Agriculture is going to be here, I think, shortly. Yeah, we can go over the summary. Um, after the bid letting, um, I called three or four contractors, um, several factors involved in the price, uh, large pipe, uh, heavy duty pipe, deep, um, one of them had thought about bidding, had just picked up another big job like this and was concerned on the timing, even though we gave them until next fall, basically, to finish, um, they said they'd be more interested if we gave them to the next summer, which would be sixteen, that's a long time, but, um, Mike Borland, I think, needs to be in on that as far as, so we find out if we don't have any trouble with the grant, if we do that. Um, Mike and I talked about the possibility of re-letting it, um, that's always a possibility. Um, does that guarantee a better price? No, does not. Um, so, uh, what do we do from here? Um, what I've summarized is the half inch and one inch drainage coefficient, uh, I've removed the silt basin. Uh, contractor has no problem with us doing that as far as affecting other prices. Um, by eliminating the silt basin, we had a significant, I mean, really significant savings in excavation, big saving in structures that we don't have to do, structures in pipe, uh, savings in seeding, um, you'll see, uh... You'll see a line item for secondary roads, that comes out as a cost that does not go to the landowners, goes to secondary roads. Uh, about in the middle of the page, we have an optional items, line item. We bid optional item, items for pipe and well closure to get the well at the south end of section twenty-nine closed. It just so happens it works out by adding the optional items in and getting the grant money for that, it lowers our, our average cost per acre. It's just kind of an odd deal how that's working out.
We're adding more acres in.
Yeah, that's right. We're adding three hundred and some more acres and that's what really, that's a very good statement. We're adding quite a few acres compared to the cost of getting that line extended, so it actually helps our cost per acre. I think I added the other items in, uh, got in the preliminary engineering report. Engineering legal publication, classification, wetlands easements.
You're strong in wetlands number, being closed.
Yes, yep, I do.
I mean, that's a big number.
It is a big number, yep.
It could go both ways too.
That's right, that's right. Estimated total district cost, um, total land, million five hundred and sixty-six thousand, based on that breakdown that I have. The basic grant amount's a little over one point five million. The additional grant, if we do the optional items, almost fifty thousand. Cost to the district, nine hundred and ninety thousand. Based on the additional acres with the optional items, we're dividing this cost by twenty-two hundred and seventy-one acres for an average cost of four hundred and thirty-six dollars an acre. What I thought would be pertinent information is what I put in parentheses down below. Sixty-one point four percent of the project would still be paid by grant. So it's significant grant money.
The, uh, excavation savings again?
So Jason maybe will-
Okay, and, have you talked to Mike about that?
Yes, not a problem. Not a problem at all.
What was the biggest reason for putting it in, was there a-
Environmental considerations.
No.
Neighbor to the north says there's a lot of silt washers through the ravine that goes by his-
And that's surface water?
The surface water.
You're just trying to control the surface water?
Yes, correct.
And this tile run through this lower area then?
Or is that, that's where it dumps, right?
Well, that's where it dumps.
We dump north of the road with the new pipe. Uh, the silt basin would be on the south side of the road. We would not be running the tile water through the silt basin, it would be just surface water, like you said.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, it, it was an environmental consideration to try and get it covered.
What happens if the silt continues to wash across the road, is there gonna be an added cost down the road then as far as it would have to be cleaned up?
It should end up in the river, um, because there's so much fall.
So whatever it does, it's gonna be done in the river?
Yeah.
The drainage just ditched to worry about or anything?
Right, no, that's right. It's a deep enough ravine with a lot of slope on it. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there'll be any of it gets hung up other than if there's down tree that catches some stocks and then some dirt or something, but uh, it should just get to the river. And that's why we're just trying to do the environmental friendly thing to, to help the situation when we had a project going on right there.
How much of a hundred fifty-six thousand is saved by that, not putting that in all that?
All of that, yeah, yep.
Mike and I wouldn't, uh-
No, we'll push that issue some more because it's something that could always be added.
You would think Icel's would always crep for a grant.
Yeah, you'd think the top of the barrel on that rather than the corner. But it's not, it wouldn't be nitrogen removal, uh, wetland, so crep doesn't qualify. I know, it's, it'd be a wonderful project.
So the grant added a funding grant money, wouldn't have paid for any of that either.
Yeah, the well closing grant doesn't- We would, yes, if, if we could increase the grant, um, on the well closure project, that would have paid seventy-five percent of it, but we can't increase it.
There's not enough funding to cover it, that's what you're getting at, but that's the problem, hang on.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, the bids come in quite a bit higher than what we expected.
Yes, yes.
Are we gonna be able to get fifteen, forty-nine thousand potential grants?
Yes, I get a verbal commitment from Mike on that, so that's what helps our average cost. Still a major, major cost to the landowners. I think what we need to do is talk through this today and then schedule a meeting with the landowners as soon as we can. And whether we can do that fairly early in the morning before they can be in the fields, or an evening meeting, or, I mean, I know we're in, in harvest time. I mean, if you met at eight, would that mess people up? I don't know, is it still too damp in the morning to go by eight o'clock?
Well, I think you just need to schedule at eight thirty-five like normal and then if there's written letters, written comments have worked too. If you can't be at the meeting, I mean, we should take a written letter.
Sure, sure, yeah.
I don't know, I'm just gonna-
Mostly want people to guess whether it's gonna rain, snow, sun in. Yeah.
I mean, it's something we're gonna have to address pretty quick, but you know, I think we need the input, so.
Yes.
We need to order a million dollar though, if you're chopping.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it makes a significant difference. You know, and I, I can argue with myself on this. This is, some people are paying four hundred dollars an acre to rent land for a year. Here's a hundred to a hundred and fifty year system. You know, for, for four hundred and some dollars. It's, it's a lot of money, that's the problem. So, where do you go with it? And, and there's gonna be some acres here that pay quite a bit. I mean, there's some, some land out there that, this is gonna do wonders for them.
Some are probably gonna be in that thousand, fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes, there'll be some of that, there'll be some of that. Matter of fact, I went through some, just some calculations for my own benefit on, say there was two hundred acres that worth fifteen hundred an acre. That'd get your average down to three hundred and sixty some dollars an acre for the rest of it. Some of those be five, six hundred, some will be a hundred and fifty to two hundred. There's gonna be a big range in benefit on this, because there's water that has no other way to get away here. I think of DD sixty-one, there was some land there that paid, I remember one forty was fifteen hundred and thirty-two dollars an acre. Didn't hear one complaint from them because they knew how much good it did, so. You know, if there's four hundred acres that pay fifteen hundred, it gets everybody's average down to two hundred and something. I don't think there'll be that many acres paying that high, I just don't. Could be two hundred acres though paying, which gets it down to three hundred and some. Bottom line, um, four hundred and thirty-six dollars an acre average cost on the half inch, with sixty-one percent of it paid by grant. If you go to the one inch, I have all the same line items. It's just that the bid starts out higher. The savings are all the same except for secondary roads, their costs would be a little higher because we have bigger pipe. Uh, the optional item is a little more, um, so that ups the cost breaker. But bottom line on that one, average cost, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars an acre, or a little over fifty-one percent of it still paid by grant. Obviously, best, the most range for the dollar is the one inch, but it's, it's a lot of money. And that's where you wanna get as much landowner input as, as possible in this, to make a decision.
Yeah, that's because if you were paying average of four hundred, you might estimate a fifteen hundred, this one's gonna get somebody close to three thousand maybe.
Yeah, I'm thinking two thousand, twenty-two hundred, maybe, maybe, yeah. Could happen. Now, that fifteen hundred and thirty-two, I was talking about in sixty-one, I think that was for a one inch, so. Yeah.
Sure.
That's it in a nutshell, yeah.
Landowners here, any, help me? You're gonna add three hundred acres and these whole, who's, who's that gonna be?
Uh, I don't, I'd, I'd have to get the list, but it's the south, let's see. Part of it's the, just the south part of section twenty-nine mostly. I think Scott Frey has some.
You gonna cross that road, Eddie?
I don't think so.
Is it gonna go more to the west also?
Uh-
Across that road, Eddie?
There's some over, we're not going as far west as the rest of the district does. I should maybe get that drawing, uh, did I put that in the file?
I mean, that water all goes to the south. It does not have to go to the, you're gonna be able to add?
Yeah, if we pick up that, because it's in trapped water basically, I mean, it's a twenty-nine. That's why we can do it. And if, and we're not gonna-
Damage to anybody's ground, it's actually, um, that's the big thing.
If you add water to somebody and it causes damage, you're liable for that damage, but we're really not adding anywhere to create damage for it. We're getting the water past everybody to the river, basically.
When you continue on down to close sink wells, where are you gonna start closing? Are you gonna start right there, probably three?
I believe so. We did a report a few months ago for the state on the ones, the wells southeast of this location. And those are actually gonna go east and north to the river.
Well, how, you can take them, you said you're gonna take them right to the river, how can you do that?
Well, to a ravine that leads to the river, I guess is what I'd say. Not right, not right to the river necessarily, but to a ravine that leads to the river.
And how is this can't go the same much farther as where you go?
Because we'd have to improve two or three districts below the one it dumped into. It just ends up way more money and less practical to take it to the south, southeast, because of all you'd have to go through. Here's the, here's the, the low section twenty-nine, here's twenty-nine, that's just up.
Where's that last sinkwell you're gonna pick up?
Right, right here, I believe. I don't know at this one. We're basically just taking this in.
But all that water comes right down to here and goes under this right down. It absolutely awful.
It probably does.
I got a picture of it.
Yeah, I, yeah, it probably does.
It's just like a river. It goes for days, this one.
With, this ag well though is what we're trying to pick up to get it closed, because it's very cost effective to pick it up for this close. Um, and then from here over, there's a future project, um, that they hope to fund, but it's very expensive.
So you're gonna pick up acres here?
Yes, and some over here, I'd say.
Which acres are we picking up, are they not coming over here?
I, I don't know exactly where the line goes over here. We're picking up basically the south fourth of section twenty-nine.
Can you, won't we come across the road?
No, no.
The south fourth, fourth.
Yeah, if you took a road, yeah.
These people have to be informed of all this?
Yeah, we've got the, we've got the notice ready, the annexation report ready, and we'll go through informing them of everything as part of this process.
You will inform all of the landowners of this change, right?
Um, for the annexation, I guess, um, yeah, I suppose, yeah.
End of the, end of the new estimate?
Uh, that'll be part of the information.
I mean, this is a big deal.
Yeah, it is, absolutely.
I, I emailed and called you, called you once, reminded you two weeks later, and emailed again for estimate. Realizing it's an estimate, just asked for that. I have not heard a word from you.
Yeah, because we didn't know where it was gonna be.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
But an estimate is, is an estimate, just that, and I realized that and I asked you three times for that. I mean, I understand why now because it's double what the initial one was.
Yeah, it was, it was hard to put an estimate on it because I have to look at all the soils and everything on it. I can give you a rough estimate based on the-
That's all they asked for and I heard nothing from your company.
Based on this, I can give you a rough estimate. So, I will figure something out.
You been able to do that with the majority of the landowners in, having a meeting, so they can know.
What, what, what the hell, phrase that?
I mean, it's-
Test that. Uh, I feel like that's a huge- I mean, they can, but it's-
And that's what we need here, find out if anybody wants to start over, if they want us to accept this bid, if they, I mean, it can be rejected for-
I think the preliminary one's like two hundred and some dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, two fifty to two sixty or something. It's all double almost, yeah.
And the first thing is what I don't get, you're gonna go across my ground, this one's gonna help me one bit, and you're gonna charge me. Let's just show some of the tile, patterned tile. Now, I wanna know before this all goes, how much you're gonna charge me, when I don't need a nickel's worth of this tile.
Well, if, if you really wanna know, that's a reclassification. And that's, you know, we drag our feet a little bit there because you're, you're spending money that might just be thrown away, but it can be done.
Put a reclass, put a reclass can be- Of the original twenty-four inch tile that goes up across that. Now, why do I want this tile? Why should I have to pay a nickel on it? Now, there's a deal up in Algonia where you went across, you were in on it, they went across the guy's ground, he didn't have to pay anything. But he does have to pay maintenance down the road. But you don't have to pay, you need to go across this, and here you're gonna charge me.
Well, there, there will be payment to you for going across.
Well, I understand that, that's minimal, that's a mountain.
Well, that amounts to quite a bit. It adds up, it's a dollars uprising, it's more than you think, it's a lot.
I gotta pay on a hundred and twenty acres that's gonna help me a bit, that adds up to a lot.
Ken.
I'm gonna have to pay four hundred dollars an acre or whatever. Uh, well, this is the circumstances with these ag wells, it's a unique character.
It is.
We're being asked to close these wells because the state, they want them closed, and being told to do that. You know, we're directing these main lines into areas that normally maybe wouldn't go.
That's right.
So it, it gets down to the point that the landowners wanna pay the amount to do it with this amount of support. Or if they don't, they wanna take a risk and eventually have to be closed. Somebody is gonna have, if they don't close them this way, and these next projects get more expensive, somebody's gonna have to develop a way to take all the water. Because they're gonna close these ag wells eventually. So then you have to look at alter, and maybe it's time to look at an alternative. If enough landowners are happy with this, some farmers sell their land, quarter section, so we can dump the water on there and close these wells, the difference.
I believe that's definitely coming.
I don't know what should all be done about tiling.
Well, and I believe the one to the southeast of here, that could easily happen.
Then we might be there now.
Because you're looking at over a thousand dollars an acre average for a half inch.
And that, it might be there now on this one, we're getting closed.
It may be, yeah, it's possible.
Has any district been accepted?
Yes.
It has. Yeah, shouldn't that be redone if you've got all of this added expense to it? Shouldn't it be? Shouldn't you decide whether, I mean, a lot of people before thought it was gonna be cheaper. Now that it's made much more expensive, shouldn't that be accepted again? Shouldn't they have a chance to remonstrance this thing?
Not, there isn't remonstrance, but there absolutely is.
No, Phil, but we could, council would be pleased with that.
But it's the all in your lap then, not the people.
But we would still want the input from the people, because you wouldn't have to meet the remonstrance requirements, but if we feel there's enough unrest, I believe we could stop it and pass it over.
Oh, absolutely.
I think there's nothing on my task that you passed over top of that.
You, you have that right, absolutely. I mean, if people don't wanna spend the money. Well, as a matter of fact, Mike Bowman asked if I had time after this meeting to meet with him to talk about other projects, this funding can be used for, because there's some on the books, so, yeah.
Yeah, they could be looking in the direction with the funding.
Yeah, yeah, and that's no threat in any way, it just, he wants to figure out if this money isn't used here because of the cost, where would he put it? And there's at least two projects here in Humboldt County he's looking at, but that's, that's just information, it's not meant to push anybody any direction.
Is Mike coming today?
Well, yeah, he was.
Well, I would like to, I would like to visit with him, although he was here today.
Yeah. Yeah, because I talked to him last week and he was gonna make it up, because he specifically said, do you have time after the meeting also?
Do we even know what their feeling is about the higher cost of accepting this cost?
He is pretty neutral on it. The things we talked over was the possibility of re-letting it. Giving them more time to build it. Take the pipe out and pay for it separately. to build it, um, take the pipe out and pay for it separately, which is a headache for us as engineers. I know. See, that's, yeah, it's a headache for us, but we're willing to do it if it saves money. What you get there is that you can get contractors that aren't maybe able to bond for two million dollars, they can.
The downside of that is, you also get contractors that probably have other issues.
Uh-huh, there's a reason they can't.
That means you already can't bond.
Well, and that's what Denver Underground said. I quizzed them about the costs of their performance bond, because I had a contractor tell me, what costs him two and a half percent of the job? And that's a lot of money on something like this. Oh, oh, he said, they must have some issues. He said, we get ours for less than, um, less than one percent, point nine percent, he said. So that's, and as well-established contractor of any size, their bonding costs are fairly small. So, um, what, and what you guys are saying is exactly right. This would allow people that maybe can't bond for so much to come, to come in. Now, there's a lot of good contractors that can't bond for two million dollars.
Yeah, because they're small.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
But you're going to have to have some pretty big equipment to go that deep.
That's right. That's right. Well, and they've talked about that they use a scraper to take off the very top part on the deepest there, and then use the excavator to finish it out. I mean, they've talked through this with subs and things to, to try and make it work. Um, rebid, you don't know, and, well, Denver just said to me, well, our price isn't going to go down. And I, I said, that's what I expect.
You are.
No, no, that's right. They, they took a hard look at this job. I, I bet I talked to the, the guys that made the estimate or the bid together twenty-five times, just questions and concerns and.
So is any of this added cost? Does the concrete price increases, or do you think that's pretty stable according to your bid?
Supposedly it's stable. Um, we haven't bid separate materials, and we could, if, if we split them out, well.
Well, no, I mean, to say, if, if there wasn't a big increase there, and, you know, maybe the bid wouldn't be any different on the concrete, that's what I'm saying, splitting it out may not be the answer.
May not be. The, the salesman for the local pipe company here swears that they gave as good a discounts on this as they have on any of these more recent projects, so.
Did they give the same discounts to everybody that asked?
Supposedly. Mike, come in. There used to be some games played with that, too, but.
So can we see these bids? I mean, is that something?
You don't see the material prices? The only way we get those is if we go forward and, and they ask for stockpiled material money, then we demand invoices to see what they paid for the pipe. We, yeah, it, there wouldn't be any incentive for them, I guess, to give up what they got the pipe for, but.
Unless we turn down their offer?
Oh, yeah, that's a possibility. Just bring up the speed, I gave them, people, the summary for half-inch and one-inch coefficients. I took out the silth basin, um, which took out some seeding, which took out some pipe and structures, um, I took out the secondary roads cost, because that's not what landowners would have to pay. Um, half-inch coefficient came out, uh, four hundred and thirty-some dollars an acre, and the one-inch came out seven hundred and some dollars an acre. Um, half-inch, the grant would still be paying sixty-one and a half percent of, or sixty-one point four, and on the one-inch grant would still be paying fifty-one point five percent.
I did include the optional line down to get that ag well in the south into section twenty-nine.
Yeah, and we've just been talking through options here, as far as rebidding, doing the pipes separate, giving them longer to bid, or to get the job done, um, and, and we'll be talking about how soon we can get a date where we can get together with more landowners and talk through this and get as much feedback as we can. So, we've talked a little bit about classification on it. Uh, classification has not been done, uh, I think that's probably the only way to really figure out who everybody would pay, um, but you're probably talking five, six bucks an acre, I don't know, to get that done, um, so you're eleven thousand dollars there. If it goes forward, it, it wouldn't be any lost time, but if it doesn't.
Yeah, it's just money.
Yeah, 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 so. Technically.
Mike, I think maybe the first question is with the increased bids, you know, where they're at, are you still comfortable funding at the same rate then for the, what it's going to cost extra for your funding side? I mean, where are we at on this? I mean, that's.
Well, you know, our bids are higher, so the seventy-five percent's going to have, it's going to take more dollars, there's dollars available to pay that, and then is are you comfortable with that, with this bid? I can answer that, maybe, because Mike and I talked through this, but that million five, whatever, is the maximum you can get.
Okay.
Because that's the toll you can get on the base bid, that's just where that, because that's where, where the estimate was, and that including it, that, yeah. You can't pick up more grant money just because the bids are higher at this point.
Okay.
But you can pick up more if you do the optional.
Okay, that clears it up.
Yeah, okay.
That's why the optional additional is the forty-nine thousand.
Yes.
And you would have approval for that on the increase of the optional item.
There you go, yes, yes.
You really have a question. I just don't understand, you know, you keep telling them, say, if you don't get this money, you're going to have to pay the money away, you know, they also may decide it's so serious that they'll just bury the whole thing down the road by themselves. And on the other, and I wouldn't be afraid to put a pump down any one of those sink wells and say, it's just as good as your water coming out of your spec and home. And just about say, you ever want them, it's just as pure as can be. Since we closed the intakes and burned the sink wells, if you got this in your head, you got to close them, but nobody's ever done that. Go ahead and stick a pump down one and pump it once. I'll bet you it's better than your water than home. And nobody thinks about that.
I've, I've drank tile water.
Oh, I have, too.
Been within the last few years, even, yeah. Tile water's pretty clean, yeah.
But any one of those sink wells is a good well. If it's a good sinkwell, it's a good well. If it's a poor sinkwell, it's not a good well. That's the way you know when you get a good sink. And you can pump water out of it, and pull it, but.
Got a question back here again?
I have a question, the gentleman that was here talking about the EPA and what they're going to charge, so, so let me just understand this. We're, we're dumping this water, draining this into the river, and if the EPA has their way, they're going to test that and make it harder and more expensive so, to get it cleaned. So we're, we're putting it in the river, and the EPA wants to, whether they will or not, I don't know. So they're saying, no, you can't do that, so why are we putting it there?
They're trying to make it more difficult to put it there. I mean, they have not.
But that's what we're, we're doing right now, opposed to.
Yeah, you're bringing up a good point, because if, in realization, in realization, if they don't want us to contaminate the wells.
And why are we?
We're doing that wrong, but they don't want us to contaminate the river, so what are we doing at some point? It's a good point.
The, the, really wants to turn this into a march.
The way they're set up, you're, you're, you're providing water for the groundwater, and it's being filtered, it's better than the, any other way to get your water level up, your water table.
Yeah, they have that test site where they've done all kinds of testing, Mike's been very involved in that, in Gilmore City area, yeah, and, uh, if it goes through the ground into a tile, into a system, it's quite clean. I mean, it just.
It's just, here's a good example, Bradgate, sand portage, knock a hole in the cement, put a sand pony in five feet, you got the purest water there is. Guess where their sewers are? Leach line, three to four feet deep above this. That much soil completely cleanses that water, and that, you can test any one in Bradgate, it's pure water, and they've got all these leach lines. Now, tell me.
I.
Huh? If you're a friend in the little bigger, then you force them to put in the sewer system. I know they believe, but I have the water now, and it's all same. Tell me, that's the way the rules are.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, but there's no common sense.
Well, that, yeah, just, Mike's in a tough spot at times trying to administer this, you know, and getting bombarded on issues that he had nothing to do with. He's just trying to enforce everything or, or make things happen.
I just never understand that in Bradgate, you know, I had a restroom down there, we had to test the water all the time, purest can be, leach line right above the wall.
Soil's one of the best filters there is. Well, they put in sand filters, it, yeah, for treatment plans, for crying out loud. So, I mean, you, same idea, you're just filtering it through a material to clean it up.
That's why I'm saying this water, we get from these sink wells, pulling into it. I, but the government doesn't understand how things work, especially in Washington.
Yeah, there you go. The mine does pretty good. Part of the mine does pretty good, we know that.
Mike, is there any way of this catch ration that, what, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that some other program that paid for that? I just, it disturbs me a little bit that, with latent bonus filling in and all of this sort of stuff, that you're going to be dumping a bunch of dirt and silt into the.
Well, we're not really adding to it.
They're not adding.
The tile isn't adding, it's, they were just going to correct that, was.
The surface water.
Yeah, catches surface water. Yeah, that was the idea.
But it doesn't qualify for.
Because then we will not be able to keep going. Yeah, there wasn't enough here to build a well.
No, it has been very large to do that.
I mean, I can't, I don't know for certain if there's any funding that would be more conservation practice, so probably come and answer with me.
Carl, without establishing a wetland or without forming some kind of a nitrogen filtration thing, I don't think the funding will be there for it. It's kind of in the middle, it's kind of a thing in the middle, really, trying to slow down the silting, which is important also, but, you know, other than CRP programs, there isn't a lot.
Maybe it has to water the district office, you know, in order, you know, type question if, if this practice would qualify.
You know, first thing, we had somebody sign a petition right this fourth, and that, by law, we have to follow through on it. Majority of people are opposed of it, looks like one more meeting, it should be either voted down and forgot about it.
Well, the, the goal would be to get enough input to make a, a good decision.
Make a good informed decision.
Yeah, informed, good, yeah, perfect, informed decision.
Right.
On what the landowners' desires are.
Yeah. Maybe invite some people, if that's two guys that signed a petition, if that's the way it turns out.
Well, and that could have changed based on the cost per acre.
True, yeah, because Mike said it's going to cost two fifty, and now it's four thirty-six, that's, that's a huge change.
Unless you're on the high end, it might be three times that.
Yeah, you know, it could be twenty-five hundred dollars an acre.
These are things we didn't know before, none of us, and.
That's right. Would they make, they ever have to pay other taxes and?
Yeah, and a cost per acre. Take a lot of the stuff right now.
Mike, we might be seeing the first signs of where we're reaching these projects, where the cost for well closure, I'm loving the landowners want to assume that the seventy-five percent left above, it might be that they need to look at alternative ways to maybe buy up. I don't know what we'd do, if, I mean, drain this water somewhere else, I, I just don't know. I mean, what's the next step if we can't get the cost down for well closure?
Uh, any thoughts? I mean, if, I mean, we can look at other alternatives.
That's what I mean, are we getting close? I mean, I think some of these wells are getting harder to close.
But if, if there's not other alternatives, and then landowners choose not to move forward, that's their right, and for the state, Department of Agriculture will do is take this, the money that was set aside for this project and.
Get it somewhere else.
And use it somewhere else.
Okay.
So, and then, when the year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty comes, the DNR is probably going to require the wells to be closed, and then the landowners are going to have to close them and do something, either let land flood, or try to come up with some other way to drain it.
Would it help anybody, anything at all, if you put a pump down on and pump out of it every week? You just test water? Would that be anything interesting to you guys?
Well, that's a DNR, that's a DNR question.
So?
And I'm not with the DNR, I'm with the Department of Ag. The DNR are the ones who permit the wells, and they're the ones who issued a continued use permit that expired in two thousand nineteen, twenty. And I would be surprised if they would renew the permits, even if you proved that the water was pure. I think so.
Because they're idiots.
Yeah.
A lot of it is political pressure.
Yeah.
And sometimes politics is not rational.
The, the Gilmore site for where they've done all the testing is.
I know all of that site, I don't even want to hear about it.
Well, but, I mean, I'm just saying that the tests they showed, did there showed it was good.
I know.
Yeah.
So like, you know, the cost for well closures now are getting close to two hundred thousand on this project. It took, you know, where we were basically doing it for a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, thirty, so, you know, I, I think we're, we're, I feel like we're getting to a tipping point on the cost of what the landowners want to pay, but they also have to weigh the fact that they may have to close them wells and lose that ground to flood out.
Yeah.
So those are facts you've got to get to at this meeting, I think you need to get their input, and I need to go.
The EPA, that they retire the farm owner.
Yeah.
They have to know that.
That's not the EPA users. Yeah.
So maybe you'd be ready to put some rough estimates or.
Well, if you want me to.
Or some of their papers.
Uh, depends on, I mean, if you want, want all the parcels estimated, it's, it takes a while. I mean, because we'll use the soils and do a quick through, but I bet you're looking at thirty to forty-five days, and that, the bid isn't good that long. Uh, I mean, if there's just a handful of them and you want approximation, I could give an idea, but boy, it'd be rough, really, I mean.
You didn't do an earlier one based on the estimate, did we? Their cost per acre? Yeah, just an estimate only.
Unless you could, right?
For, what do you mean?
That's why you didn't give the estimate before, because.
I mean, I could.
The amount.
Okay.
But your rough one's going to be pretty close, isn't it? I mean, you're.
You know, it's, it's dangerous territory, we've done this a lot, and we've been fortunate we've, we're close. And that's, I'd have to do it going in saying it's a rough estimate, just to give you some idea. Our surveyor gives me a terrible time, he said, because as soon as you do that, they say that's what it's going to be. Well. Question.
How, how much would it cost to get everybody an estimate?
Well, if you want it pretty accurate, you know, you're probably looking at about five bucks an acre, I mean, which is.
Okay, so altogether to the district, it would be?
Eleven or twelve thousand dollars.
Opposed to, what do you?
Post the four hundred and thirty bucks an acre. Yeah, I've got it in here.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I've got fifteen thousand, that's a little on the high side, I think, for the reclassification.
Is the Shelvin Farm still in? Did that get thrown out, being, it's going to be quarry?
It's still in there, um, and we're going to have to have meetings with them on land use, and, uh, I believe there'll be some kind of payment expected, just because the, that is being made available to them. They're, they have access to the project, they have to go through somebody else's land, but they have that right. So, they're not out.
Are they trying to get out?
They have not pushed that at all. Now, they, they may yet try to get out, and we understand that they, they made a, want we understand that they, they made a lump sum payment in the district in the last year or two in Pocahontas County, just so they met the requirements and they wouldn't be assessed in the future. Not saying something like that might not happen, it could happen.
So, if they can get it out, can anybody get out?
If you pay enough, um...
How much would I have to pay?
I don't know. I don't know.
You got one single, forty acres there. All I have to have is ten acres of wetland and I, I don't need you.
I...
How much would it cost?
I, I don't know, I mean, you have to go through the whole process in order to find out, I mean...
Mike, you can kinda see where this is coming, it's kinda coming to a standoff, and in a standoff, we need some alternatives, so I'm wondering, is there an alternative where the funds could be used to buy this property, to establish these wells, if, if we're gonna just let them drowned out? I mean, is there other alternatives where they definitely want these closed, or the landowners are on their own, I mean, is it time to look at a new direction?
Well...
And I don't know.
Right. I mean, the goal is, is to get them closed, but they don't have to provide alternative drainage to close wells.
That's what I'm getting at.
There can be land retirement, and that, that's something we would consider.
I think it's time to consider it. As an option, at least gives you another option.
Sure.
Gary said he put, I don't know if he means that, but he said he'd do the same one as.
I mean, we wouldn't buy property, the department doesn't own property.
Okay.
Look into giving easements, you know, that they would essentially agree not to farm their land, and then, you know, we'd have to work through that process.
Trying to track South Dakota where lakes just start growing bigger and bigger and bigger. Yeah.
So, how do you do that? Do you have the area in your department that does that, that comes up with a figure for it? We would probably do something similar to what we've done with the Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, in terms of figuring out what the land is worth and then coming up with a value, and then it's probably a certain percent of that. We have not had a project where that's happened yet, so we're interested in doing that, but all the projects we've done so far, the landowners have wanted to go with alternative drainage. But we know that as we move forward, that, you know, the cost gets more and more expensive. In many ways, we've closed the easy ones, so we know we're getting to the harder and harder wells, and so we, we're open to other alternatives if the landowners are...
Would you foresee them to raise their cost share to ninety percent, you know, or something like that?
I don't know.
Like, in the next, in the future years, you're saying, well, they're not happening because it's too cost prohibitive, you think they'll bump up what they'll pay?
Um, I, oh, the, I don't think so.
First of all, we're not guaranteed we're gonna have funding the next year, we don't this year, current year, we may not next year.
Right, we just, I mean, we might. Future holds, this last fiscal year, this early July one, you know, there was initially some money set aside, and then the governor lined up and vetoed everything because it was just extra funding and because of the budget, that's what he chose to do.
Right.
So, we guys, you always issue for this one.
I wanna add one more thing to them out here. Those sink wells, some of them take water, you cannot believe, they're scary. I've heard, and I don't, if you put in half inch coefficient, these people aren't gonna have the drainage they got now, some of them, some of them do because they got full sink wells, but there's some sink wells.
I've heard people say just gores, it just takes it so fast, yeah.
Yeah, that was before they put the top on.
Yeah.
Now they're tiled into it.
Through tiles, yeah, yeah, so you're limited to what your tiles will do, yeah.
With the top, you just want nothing to get in.
Yeah.
But I've heard that in the old days when they were just an open pit, that they were almost other sizes or others sometimes. Oh, yeah.
Well, what do you wanna do?
Well, I guess it's a matter of, um, I mean, I can, I can ask the low bidder if he's willing to hold his bid longer than the thirty days required. I, I, they, I, I'm not sure they will because they said if this doesn't happen, there's other projects that need to be...
They'll be bidding other jobs.
Yeah, he says, we've gotta be bidding other jobs if this isn't gonna happen, so I don't know if we're getting to hold it more than thirty days or not. I'm, I'll approach it as if he will and then see what he says. I just, I just don't know how we can do a reclassification that fast, is my hangup. I mean, well, it's possible, but it's, you know...
What other information can we give the landowners to make an informed decision?
You know, the one thing, Rick, it's, you know, without doing a formal one, you can't get too exact, and that's where you get in trouble with individual landowners.
Yeah.
So, you know, you take this average cost and you set, you write it up in a letter, this is the average cost, please understand, if you've got bad wells or a lot of drainage needs, it could be three to four times higher.
Right.
That's a starting point.
Yes.
Because even if I see that, I'm gonna be concerned if it's three times higher and a half inch is gonna be...
We can do that much.
I mean, I think that would be a minimal.
Because we can look at a section of land and see what other quarions soils and the Okoboji's are and...
But I think we'll get feedback from the landowners if that letter goes out, if they have an understanding of what's going on.
Yeah.
And if it's gonna get up against time and we're not after the bids, we're just gonna have to start over, cancel it, or figure out something else.
Yeah.
Should some of these landowners be going to Lake Allison and say, okay, if I wanna put this in wetlands, what do I get? Is, is that, that's the alternative, isn't it?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
I guess that's an option to go look at, that'd be the first...
I mean, are they gonna spend four, five hundred bucks, or I don't know what they get if they turn it into wetlands, what do they get a year for that? Is it similar to CRP?
Well, basically, if you take a wetland, you sell your property to a wetland bank and sell it.
Well, you can't sell, I've talked to them about that, you lease it to them for...
Right, that's correct.
They don't, they don't buy land, they lease it.
And what are the leases for, for viable alternatives to this?
It could become conservations, it could come under, Todd Lee could be in charge of it, you know, if it's a wetland bank, is that how that...
They get like a lifetime lease on it or something.
No, it's really, it's a lease, it isn't buying it.
Pay big bucks, you wanna bring it back out.
Well, you won't be able to, it's a hundred, it's probably a hundred-year lease.
Yeah, it's a lifetime lease and they have it, and you've basically, uh...
So, that's what Mike's saying, that's kinda how this would have to be done, I suppose.
So, what kind of a dollar value do you get at least? Do you have any idea for... We have to work through that process, I mean, what, what we do in the Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program is we look at what, how FSA would look at it in terms of...
Productivity.
Productivity, but...
It depends if it holds water, or if it's just grassland, or...
Right, if you have an development cost to get it to hold water.
Right.
And there's a lot of issues there.
Right, there's just, and it's something we could explore, but...
You know, how the problem would be not to, if it didn't go through, not everybody could do it, they wouldn't accept it.
Yeah, I don't, not everybody's...
A small percentage of it, but that's not really gonna help everybody.
No.
By the way, you're talking, what, twenty-two hundred acres, well...
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot.
See, we would, essentially what would happen is we work to close the wells, and whatever land was impacted by closing the wells, there to be some compensation, but there would be no entry drainage at all.
Right, the land surrounding wells is, you know, the drainage is gone.
Right.
I think, Rick, you're not gonna be able to get the, you're not gonna be able to get these costs, and I think that's, I think that's risky, but I do think you need to let it go, this is what our new bid is, this is what the average is, and then what, if you were most adversely affected with the egg wells, your, your cost could be as high as this, or it could be a little lower than this four hundred, I think you do that, and let's try and get feedback.
Yeah, we can make a statement in there, if the high end will be up here and the low end, you know, anywhere from five dollars an acre up to twenty-five hundred dollars an acre, based on your...
And I can work with Trish to come up with wording.
And then have them call, if they're, if they're afraid they're in high, have them call you and just talk to you about it.
Sure.
But we're gonna let the soils manage. From the rest, I mean, we don't have enough land.
No, no, that's right, no, no.
Even the signed origin might have concerns at this point.
Yeah.
But if they don't...
majority of people are opposed to it at that point, it makes it easier, it's easy, it's over.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's something that should be brought to a head, with everybody informed, an informed decision, yeah.
Right, and we still have time to do that in the next, but we need to get on, I think you need to work on that, get these letters out, go from there.
Yeah.
Could we have Allison and, I mean, who all is gonna be invited to this informational...
You know, we could have her, I'm sure she'd come up.
Allison, maybe, we have questions, we can get some answers.
Yeah, make sure you give her heads, I mean, call her today, if you set a date, so she can plan it, I think she would come up.
Oh, yeah.
And then let her know what, what their, what their questions are gonna be, it's a good idea.
Um, well, if we...
Two weeks?
Yeah, if we get the letter put together this week, next two, three days, hopefully.
We include the people that are possibly in?
Yes.
Makes sense to tell you.
Twenty-four door? And thirty-nine o'clock again? Do you want the first thing in the morning?
Doesn't matter, um...
We could have the first thing in the morning.
Yeah, maybe three, five, that way we can get started, you know, that's...
Get up early.
Absolutely.
You may have to allow an hour for that at least.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Less than that.
Yeah.
The first thing in the morning.
We, we've talked here for almost an hour. Yeah.
Eight-thirty on twenty, BD one-two-five, continuation of hearing is over, talk.
Well, this is just an informal hearing, informal hearing on, on the bids.
Well, I mean, you sort of made a decision probably at that time, whether you're gonna accept a bid or not.
Yeah, that's right.
If you're running toward the end of...
And of course, Trish put in there, you know, if you cannot attend the meeting, feel free to write a letter, at least express, expressing what your thoughts are, and, and that would also be on the half of that inch coefficient.
Yes.
You feel, that's, that's a big one, right there.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody should have their opinion on that, right?
Well, like Gary said, if you're gonna do it, you should do the one inch coefficient, he wishes that he's done the one inch on.
But that, that's easy for him to say, if he doesn't really have any benefit, I don't know why he would worry about the rest of them, unless the rest of them have to pay it. If he's ever gonna use it, why would he worry about a one inch?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go on to BD six lateral one. What's in your agenda?
Oh. They estimate for millon excavating. Fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars.
That was out there last week to verify progress. Yeah, it's coming along.
It's gonna be done next week?
Yes, it, I don't know what, I don't know how much rain you ended up with, one and three-quarter inches over the last week. Yeah, yeah. And he was in a, a spot with some bad soil before he got to the bottom, it was good at the bottom, but halfway down, it was not so good. But he's, he's, he's really come along once he got through that first field.
We need to know if you pay that.
We pay, you pay us the number six for fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, thirty cents, thirty-two cents, is that right?
Two cents.
Two cents.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, the young one, just dropped.
For the second?
I'll second.
Second in the long discussion, not a whole paper, uh, this motion period.
Trying to think what else we've got.
You have the list?
I did, I have a list. Um, oh, yeah, procedure on putting intake over main pile. Um, BD thirty-three lateral D, is that it, right?
Right.
But do you know what our procedure is, we put, install, intake over the main, whose responsibility it is?
Do you, if it's a, an improvement project, we always plan for a few as part of the project. This mostly is though after we're through that initial construction. That's what you're...
Yeah, to remedy the...
Yeah. Pocket.
Oh, that, yeah.
We can't get it funded.
Well, there could be, yeah, there might be funding for it.
Yeah, I mean, how do you...
So, where's, where's this, uh, I guess I'm not...
Well, it's right by the high, it's by the blacktop, isn't it?
Gary wants an intake in the road ditch, or...
In the field.
Field, like, I'm worried, what are you looking at?
I think so.
Well, is it big enough, or is it, I guess it's the main there, though.
The main is there, it's a matter of where do you draw the line on what's the district's responsibility?
Right.
And we typically, yeah, exactly, we typically look at the initial construction being the district's responsibility. Now, do you mishold, not put the intakes in them? Absolutely.
What are you talking, to putting in an intake, how deep is it, or...
Well, it's not very deep.
You're not talking big bucks.
No, 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 you're not talking that much.
No.
In some fairness, you know, normally, you know, farmer has a pottle, they wanna drain, that's fine, in this case, where there's water coming from other properties through this, it's probably a little more unique than just a farmer draining, draining a pottle, I mean, if it isn't gonna be a big cost thing, I don't know why, we couldn't try it as a district move at this time, it's a little unique from what's the normal situation is.
Yeah, I would say that it's...
I mean, give it a try, I mean, if it helps, and we don't get funding for a while, I mean, it's better than nothing.
Yeah.
I'll make some tile here.
Probably can't be much more than sixteen, come through.
I don't know if it was still twenty-four where they were tying in or not. Might be a little smaller than that, but decent, yeah.
At least it'll help, huh?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The river a little?
Yeah.
Well, he's been patient, he's trying to get this working out.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
There is a lot of water that runs through, and runs over, through, under the road and across, too, if we even help that, would help this...
Yes, yeah, it would.
The surface water you can get in the pipe. Before it runs on top.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
The FEMA guy is going to be here sometime again.
Have fun with him.
No, we will.
You can handle him.
I'm not going on one of them.
Oh, come on now, we got pictures of him.
He wants to go on TV though.
Looked out at the drains.
I'll meet you over there. Yeah, I love it, I'll meet you over there.
I thought anybody was gonna need a pickup.
It would help.
All right, anything else?
We're gonna be writing BD six open ditch here in the next few days, two reasons, there's a petition for cleanout and there's FEMA situation, we're gonna try and catch any recent sloughs that could be, um, requires, or mandate assistance from FEMA, and otherwise we're looking at maybe some spot cleanout if it's not recent problems, so, we'll have more information soon on that. I think that's it.
What the hell?
Don't think so, don't think so.
All right, you know, there's a lot of drainage.
I'll second. I'm gonna get a... Got somebody off?
Go and come up with some good rough estimates.
Yeah, yeah, when I, what I, what I intend to do is look at our soils numbers, and, and we can list soils, if they have that on theirs, they'll be higher, and if they have these, they'll be lower, if they have these, they'll be above the DAX, or we can give them that much. Most of the people, yeah, most of the people at least have an idea on their soils, or can look at the map, so...
What are you listening to?
Oh.
I bet it is.
Yeah, you guys need...
That's all right. So, what are the projects you got, just to follow through, what do you do, Williams out there?
I don't know, we, we have, I'm not sure which one it's in.
Yes, it's thirty-three lateral B, if I...
Is that the one?
One, one mile.
Right now, there's one with four wells, I hit it out.
Oh.
BD two lateral M.[1762.82]
Two lateral M.
Yeah, because it might be enough to work those, like.
Well, it might be, if this one don't go through, then-
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't know, I don't have a good read on this one.
I know.
They're pretty close, and-
A lot of-
Yeah, hard rigging.
They do a lot of-
I still think we're not gonna do it, but three years from now, these are-
See, the last time you said that, it had some more on it, it was thirty-eight percent of the money.
Yeah, yeah.
Broke your wrist, and that's a little bit.
Yeah. Good breaks, yeah.
It's weird, I don't know. I think we're talking here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know. Yeah, I guess I could do it.
Yeah.
I'm in English.
No snow removal now and proceed with trying to set a time and place for a hearing to go to Level B.
The bridge in Culver at the mile is flat all the way through.
Yep, that makes sense. Otherwise, we took comments and I'm somebody, those are the two that I, I looked at in detail different and wanted to recommend something different than was on here. Otherwise, there is many of them out there. We have some that came in from the shops to recommend this, this, and this because there are only a single bin on it. Although they be good considerations, we haven't considered those because they don't use the bin this year, but they might next year. We haven't touched those. There's several of those. There's several other candidates where one shop had three, four other miles that we could also consider and I said at this point, um, this is it so far unless it's... You're driving the bus. Tell me what you want to do.
No, let's start here. I like this mile, don't you, Harlan?
So, we're gonna have a hat on the fifteen and a half. Fifteen and a half mile.
Or fifteen plus, whatever that means.
Plus or minus is what that's supposed to say.
I think we stayed this.
They need to keep a little on the way of it.
We stayed this.
Now, we've worked with our routes and...
Again, we do have a bus route on the Weaver Township one. There's bus routes on the three consecutive north-south roads. They're side by side, but we picked the porous grade and the railroad crossing to make it a no-snow removal. So, if it is the best grade out there with also nothing is Delaware Avenue, right where your new drainage project dumps in. That's a nice grade with nothing on the mile.
You know, these things are painful. We have to do this, but we've studied this through work sessions. We've studied some board sessions. This is the best estimate we can come up with. It may be wrong, but I think we got Lang Drew, Harlan. We gotta keep picking away and see what we can do. Save some money. So, with that said, I moved to approve the proposal as posted as was in the paper and had discussed here today for no snow effective next year.
This year.
This snow year.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any other discussion?
That is accepting. That is just the north-south portion of, uh...
North Livermore.
North of Livermore. I'm trying to figure out that's Oak Avenue. Is that what it is, Mort?
I don't know.
I can't see it. I, I, I think it's...
You're just going through that acreage north.
Right. Decline acreage down to the lagoon and I believe it's Oak Avenue.
If it does, I have an oak, yeah.
Not only dollar cost savings per mile, you know, because some people say, well, geez, they might as well drive down it as to turn around and drive around the section twice. Did you hear that?
We've spent hours to do that half-mile piece on Oak Avenue.
It's mainly when winter gets tough. It's the winter when there's not much snow. It's not a big cost savings, but when you get the winters where they're really plowed in, it saves money, yeah.
No, it saves as aggregate, saves the roads, saves everything.
The thing I like about it is if you get used to these roads being closed and you're using the alternative ones, if you occasionally use these roads, not only that, we should be able to open up the remaining roads a little quicker because they've got fifteen less miles to go out and do, but take time, you know. We're gonna be able to address the current, the active roads a little quicker maybe, hopefully.
The thing that we haven't seen and we're fortunate again is not only the time and effort of the staff and the equipment, but we haven't paid the fuel bill to match running seventeen machines every day, day in and day out, just to move snow. That is huge right there.
That's a big cost.
And if, uh, yeah.
How many hours on the machine that costs? A lot to replace.
Yep. Um, but that variable of the fuel is what we're fortunate. We did have a lot of small storms. We used a lot of sand last year. But we didn't have any two-day knockouts, um, didn't have day after day. It doesn't seem that many years ago that we went seven weekends in a row plowing snow. And I hope we're not there yet. I'm not ready for that.
And wet with storm and wet winters.
Yeah. I think that'll affect our spring road more than anything.
You weren't working in nineteen sixty-one, were you? That was my first year of teaching. Monday, we had six Mondays in a row with no school. Starts snowing on Sunday night and by Monday morning we have a blizzard. About time for another one though, didn't it?
No, we can pass. No, we can pass.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Anything else, Harlan?
Oh, we are, I think that you guys, uh, we are, hopefully, um, the bridge, the concrete work done. Mayorman's done with mostly his share. Now he'll be to the sub to pass off the grading portion of this bridge project. I'm beginning to move machinery out and in. Hopefully, we get at that while we have the dry days here. We're supposed to have some dry weather this week. That would be good. We are on our second week, uh, excuse me, we went through ten days, uh, two weeks. Our late start date for the three projects that we awarded was two weeks ago today. And I believe all but two days have been working days, so they might have eight days clicked off and they're not here yet. I did talk to Mr. Grumbach. Mr. Grumbach is still intending to...
Get you rough?
Get us a rough at Dakota City. Most of the items in the sale have been picked up in Dakota City. Uh, we've begun to clean out what's left and rope and move the equipment around, but, um, otherwise it's already starting to prepare for fall, winter.
We talked about this once before, um, the bridge, the south and east of Livermore. Well, is it Foster Bridge or what? He's in the black top going to Hardy there.
Foster.
Foster Bridge, yeah. You drove over that once on your journey?
Yeah.
Is there a rough bump there coming?
It's there all the time, often. Yeah, west side's worse than east.
Yeah, I had a guy jump me this week about it. He's about, he said about three miles left. I don't believe that, but it's...
No, it's rough. We, uh, we looked at it. It's the approach. The approach is camelback, I think, uh...
Like what happened at Rutland?
Uh, no, the approach is camelback. It's high on either end. It's low in the middle. Uh, we've looked at trying to patch it and, and I think the, to make it a smoother ride is probably to replace the approach totally. I hadn't thought of slurry level, uh, but, uh, I don't know if that would work on trying to level the camelback out or not. We do have a paving project coming up for that and I figured it was gonna come ahead on not this summer, uh, not in two thousand fifteen, but two thousand sixteen. That whole stretch is, uh, two years out from Highway one sixty-nine to Hardy.
You plan on maintaining that then?
Well, there'd be some, uh, that'd be the place to try to look at it. If we're gonna do an approach, it would be to tie it, to do it.
The paving project.
Do it ahead of the paving so we can try to match the approach. I don't know. Approaches, uh, if I remember right, were what fifteen, fourteen thousand on Rutland? And how many years ago was that? So, that's gonna be, um, twenty-eight, twenty-five thousand at least for an approach. And yep, it's a bump, but every bridge you're gonna have a bump.
Can we put a bump sign up?
Never put a bump sign up on it yet.
Maybe we need to do that.
Maybe we need to do that.
I think we should look into it on the west side at least.
Uh, east side.
On the east side, yeah.
West side isn't.
East side bump, yeah.
Isn't so bad. I mean, it's like the railroad tracks, uh, railroad tracks, pretty fixed unit and the road goes up and down and sometimes the crossing's smoother than other times depending on the time of the year. Maybe we'll look at putting a bump sign up, but if there's any on this bridge, uh, we haven't gone full tear it out and replace it, Trek.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thanks, Paul.
Decision on action on being for hearing for Hocker Farms, two, RSC Draft Construction.
The official draft construction permit came back to you. If you decide, excuse me, that you don't want to allow it, that you want to protest it, you have fourteen days following receipt of the letter to notify the Chief of the Water Quality Bureau that you intend to file a demand for care for it. That's what you need to decide each other.
And then they take a look at it and rule with you or against you? Is that right?
Um, I don't know. It doesn't really say. A matter would be heard by the commission at a time and location to be determined by the commission and then they would render a decision within thirty-five days.
Down at the bottom of that second paragraph there, it says here, this would be Animal Compliance Act. It includes the other documents to be considered by this commission or a statement indicating no other documents will be submitted for the commission's consideration. And then whether there'd be oral arguments before the commission is desired. So, I imagine something like this, I mean, that's our, you gotta have some, why we're, you know, we're questioning it. Let them review that, I guess. Pat suggested Board of Adjustment address some of these things again that we, on Hocker too, the reasons we did not approve that construction permit. Of course, there's Lawrence Davis and Harley and I and Dave Lee is absent. He had another meeting. And Tim Burris wasn't at that meeting and I think there's some public here that may have some things to say too, but I'll just bring up the reasons again why we denied it. And we still all believe we did the right thing for water, water, water. We're talking water today.
Yeah.
In a way, it was denied because we believe it was an area in Section thirty-two, Lake Township. It's a high risk for both groundwater contamination and surface water contamination runoff. There's a dredged ditch. It's pattern tiled there and the ditch is actually shallow like Harley mentioned to me earlier, so the tile have to be pretty shallow. And even where the location, we think it's gonna be, we know in a forty-acre area where it's gonna be, but they didn't have a survey and actually, how can you establish setback distances if it's somewhere in a forty-acre? You can't. So, that was one other concern we had. And, you know, there's definitely, there's gonna be five thousand gallons of manure per acre on that ground. And that's a lot of manure. We wondered about the hydraulic pressure even on the pits as far as collapsing them, the walls. Of course, they say they can build them, so they will not collapse. I asked the person from Hocker Farms and he said, uh, yeah, we've got an engineer that engineered all that. It's all okay. And I said, hey, been with you long? Yeah, a long time. Well, I remember one time when we had an engineer that did it in Wright County, Ray Kramer. Come to find out, he wasn't even a certified engineer. That's what DeCosta and all them got, had all that fiasco over there. So, there's a lot of things that aren't answered.
Was his manure management plan, just spread manure on this wetland?
It was on, right around the building site, the same area of southeast, let's see, southwest quarter of the south. Let's see, how heck was it? It's in the southeast quarter, Section twenty-two, southwest. So, we have a forty-acre track in there and the manure management plans, it's all pattern tiled all around it. Goes right to the dredge ditch to the east there. And, you know, it says the, I think it's an aisle code, you can't legally pollute state water as well. This water's gonna go somewhere and there's, it's all gonna run to the east and due to the... There was even some indecision of the DNR in regards to karst conditions. Well, the DNR basically decided to err in sight of pollution rather than say that it was okay. I mean, that's what they said. They, it could be. There was no discrepancy there. In one part of the, the email that they had, it said there was a sliver of karst, but they don't know for sure where it is or anything. And it is a little, pretty much a lake bed. In fact, in their legal description, they had to build or remake a legal description for this parcel of land because it's considered a marshland and it never had one previously. So, that's, there's something said right there. Couple other things I might just mention is in their master matrix, you get points for different things. Economic value to the local community, no points taken. Emergency action plan, if they have a spill or something like that, no points taken. Construction permit contains a closure plan. That's if the thing fails or there's a, maybe a pit collapses. No points taken. Adoption implementa, implementation of manure management recognized by the EMF Department. No points there. Uh, adoption of implementation of NRCS comprehensive nutrient management plan. They didn't go through anything there. And that's, no points there. And here is another one. Written approval of a hundred percent of the property owners within a mile. No points there. And I, there's a couple others that I recall. One of them, they didn't take points for and I don't have it with me, was groundwater monitor, groundwater monitoring. They took no points for that. And that's an area, you know, it's a high-risk area. There was no points taken for vital filters in the building to help alleviate odors coming out. There was no points taken for any trees or anything planted around it, so... Besides which we feel is really a high environmental risk of water, ground and surface water. Surface water ends up in the mown eventually and Bill Stone knows what that's like. World's largest nitrate removal plant there. And also, one other thing I might mention, we have a small questionnaire that we passed around, that we asked the board or the applicants to fill out. We can't require them to do it, but so far, most all of them have always done it and it's just a sign of a good neighbor. We tell them that, you know, it's for their good as well as ours. Well, I think Pat said, the attorney says, well, we don't have to do it and we're not doing it. So, it almost, are these people gonna be good neighbors? I mean, they always say, I asked them at meetings. I says, you wanna be a good neighbor, don't you? Oh, yeah, yeah, we do. I apologize for not sending that out, but all these things I mentioned, is that a sign of a good neighbor? And then also a high risk of groundwater contamination? That's my opinion of it and that reflects the rest of the board members too. We all come to a consensus on our decision. And I think Captain Spencer even has some additional information she can give you on the soil types there as far as...
Yeah, I'd be happy to share them with you who would help give you the information about the decision we have to make. Um, this farm is in Lake Township, is Section thirty-two, and it is the southeast quarter of Section thirty-two. And I pulled the soil map on it because it's, as you all know, it's historically a marshland that's been recently pattern tiled. So, the surface water and groundwater are a big concern because the, um, it is historically a marsh and that, of course, doesn't change with the pattern tile. It just drains it. And as you look at the soil map for this section and you look at that quarter, um, and I'll let you fellows look at the numbers, but the numbers are basically, do you see it, Jerry?
Yeah.
It's Section thirty-two and we're looking at this southeast quarter. Here's P sixty-six and here's Highway three. Now, the rest of the section is on a different map, but this is the quarter we're worried about right now. And most, most of the soil on that is five zero eight, which is calcusta. That's a siltic clay loam found in depression area, which makes sense because this is a low area. It's marsh area. Zero to one percent slope, poorly drained depressional soil. The other big number that you see is five oh seven, which is canis, canispio clay loam and that is also poorly drained soil. And then there is kinda interesting, there's a kind of, it looks almost like a river. It's not a river, but it flows like an oxbow of a river of a soil called ninety-five. And that is, um, harps clay loam, which is also a depressional soil with very little drainage and, um, it's on the, it's found on rims, so there's a very shallow rim around these depressions and that you see of five oh eight and five oh seven. And then there's one circle of six, which is okoboji. And a lot of us are familiar with okoboji. The Spencers are very familiar with it because south of our house, we have an okoboji area. But immediately after the heavy rain, all of the water washes into that okoboji area and sets and upon, it doesn't seem to drain, does eventually. And okoboji is pretty common in our area, but this calcusta and canisteal as well as the okoboji and the harps are very depressional soils. And actually, all that does is reflect that this was all the inside's in marsh that has just been recently patterned tiled. I, you know, I guess my concern would be as yours is. You have a very important decision to make and I certainly respect that. But I think part of our worry has to be around not only the groundwater going into the tile, tiles and then heading east where it eventually goes into the Blue River, but also just the surface drainage because this is a depressional area. And that's a lot of manure on ground in a very vulnerable area.
How do they maybe pick up all these good points that they left out all those other areas? That's just a policy of the matrix? They can get points wherever they need, evidently.
Well, it's impossible to fail it.
That's what it looks like.
Quite honestly, it looks like the matrix, but that don't mean you can agree with it. But you can see a pattern there when they, when they don't do anything to try and protect the water, people.
Normally in the past, you've seen they at least try to get five or six, get some points off those areas.
Yeah, show that you're interested.
It's surprising, yeah.
Being, working with the community and not necessarily just be a detriment.
You're familiar with it, John. If it wasn't pattern tiled, you wouldn't have been there, would you?
Well, several, several weeks out of the year, it's underwater.
Yeah.
In the spring, it's almost always underwater.
Underwater, you'd never haul nothing in the spring. And this fall, you wouldn't haul manure in there if it wasn't pattern tiled. And how deep is the tile? It ain't too deep.
It can be even lower.
Too deep because up there, they say that, you can drive by and look and see that.
Yeah.
So, what's gonna be your view for EBA, DPC then?
Well, I would...
I would request that you're gonna have to have.
Right.
Yeah.
I would say it's a high-risk area due to the geology. It's in a low area, a marshland that is known and has been a marshland for groundwater contamination. The spreading area of the manure management plan area is the same. It's a high-risk area. And what does go in the ground is gonna move into that dredge ditch and it's gonna contaminate surface water, which... Then there's, and again, in regards to their application, you know, they didn't even have a survey. And our sheet there, we asked for some of these things before they get there. It simplifies the things. They can have all their paperwork with us. It's uniform for everybody and in the past, they've all complied with it. And we can tell them, you don't have to do it because state laws. So, if you feel if you wanna come into our county and be a good neighbor and an asset, why not at least provide us with some information? And some of these topics on there, we've had problems in the past with, uh, manure management plans on property that was sold in estates. People didn't know about them. So, it can, there's a whole lot of things that people don't think about if they're not recorded here that can cause problems for people in the community in the future. And quite honestly, I would think it's even good for the, the company that owns the hogs to have these recorded too.
Well, they're supposed to have manure management plans recorded every year.
Well, they can show us, we want them to see them when they come to us at the Board of Adjustment.
Usually they have them up ahead of time, don't they, for you? Haven't you seen those in the past?
Most of them always have. That's why we come up with a sheet. At first, some of them said, we didn't know about it and all that. We heard a million excuses and maybe it was, they were valid maybe. So, we come up with a sheet that is sent to them or give to them or they're notified. These are the things when you come to the Board of Adjustment, if you have these things and everything seems good. It takes us less time. There's no delays. It's uniform for everybody. And in the past, we've had, they've all complied with it. Some of them growled a little. I mean, but they all done it. And, but, and these guys, um, and I'm talking about the Hocker Farm people, uh, they, they just seem a little bit obstinate on wanting to constantly comply with anything that we ask. They say, well, we don't do this in other counties and that. Well, Hocker County is a little unique. We've got two rivers. We've got natural sinks. We've got drainage wells. We've got a lot of drainage systems here. We're, we're actually quite different. There's good places maybe they can be located and there's bad places in this county. That's why we like to collect information. And we find too, information from the public, I don't know that area or didn't know it before. I went over there, looked at it. I went over there with Dave Lee and the DNR. We stood on Highway three, looked out. We seen the cornfield. Until we got to researching it more, then you find out more about it. And then people from the local area fed information into us. And you can see the depressions where the corn was low enough, but, you know, and again, it's... Even in their application, it used to be you had to have the, the application had to be in the person that was actually buying the land or owned the land. Well, now they have an offer to buy. Well, I don't think that was even signed and recorded in this big sheet. So, they avoided a few steps that even in the application, it wasn't right. So, that was, all these things are the reasons the board collected unanimously to, to reject it. Mainly water contamination, but there was a lot of other things that made us a little wary of them.
I think we need Board of Adjustment request for the Board of Engineering, reason. You guys are willing to go to bat. You're a lot more knowledgeable than we are. We only, like you say, you walked out and looked at the corn. It looked all right. Maybe it looks all right to us, but you've done the research and you've presented good evidence. Why do we ought to challenge it, I think?
Well, we've tried to do what is right. We believe in protecting water and people and, and community of the county. Let's go for it. people and, and the community, the county, that's best for it. What, I think we'd be willing to, I suppose it goes to the DPC next, is that right? Is that where it goes?
Mm-hmm.
I guess if you guys, uh, that's our job then. If you guys stand behind us, it's our job to defend what we believe is right in our decision.
Well, I think you have a right to ask some questions, and they should give you some kind of response back, and, you know, it's only fair.
Yeah, what is our, uh, what is, how are we insured? Do we have, uh, the kind of insurance covers public employees for liability suits, or what?
There is, some coverage for boards that serve under the board's-
Are we covered on that?
I don't know what it is, but I don't know what the limits are, and that's what there is.
Well, I don't think there'd be any lawsuit at this point, because, uh, it isn't getting into any legal part, or anything legal yet.
You're kinda just going through the steps that are available.
That's right. That's exactly right. But it's up to the board to decide.
Yeah.
Back to your part.
I can't see how a guy would lease it and give a hog set up a twenty-year lease on that ground. It's just like we asking Harlan for a twenty-year lease on his farm, and I have the hog walking on it for twenty years. If he wants to sell it in five years, too bad, it's still there. I, I can't see anybody signing up to something like that. And I, I'm sure any of you board members would never sign up to a twenty-year lease.
No, looking at dollars.
But that's all it is.
Because their fertilizer costs.
Fertilizer, yeah.
And that doesn't make it any cheaper, twenty years from now, it'll be more expensive than it is today.
I have a, an opinion on that too, because the person from Hocker Farms told me that the, uh, manure was regulated highly by the state, and commercial fertilizer isn't. Well, I don't agree. Maybe the state supposedly regulates manure management plans, but your pocketbook regulates commercial fertilizer. You're not gonna put more fertilizer out there than you can use.
Right.
And it's GPS-wise, there's areas that don't need as much fertilizer, it isn't brown. So these buildings need to be emptied, they've got, they've got. There's, nobody knows how many gallons actually go on there. They have to be emptied, and that's where it's gonna go. And there's no guaranteed analysis, uh, analysis on hog manure either, like commercial fertilizer.
Yeah. They do take samples during the process and send it in. At least they're supposed to.
That's what you're saying.
Well, I don't think the attorney does, you know, the manure management-
No.
No, like, I'm, I'm agreeing, fully agree with them, that, well, where they're gonna spread the manure sits underwater in the spring, and then it all runs through the culvert underneath the road, right into the dredge ditch, and-
That's in the, I think it's state coast. I know you can't legally pollute Iowa waters, state waters, and that refers to surface water and groundwater.
Looks familiar, I put a nice manure in now, and that's like the tiles, folks, the top. Where it goes, they'd have to go in the tile, the ground already full.
So here's, uh, just operation tied up to it, don't you know?
Uh, they say Iowa Select, but, you know, they're all out of that area, Iowa Falls, old and area, and they've got more names than Stars in the Sky, and they play the show game, and, you know, I mean, it could, it could be a, something like A.J. DeCoster for all we know, which I don't know if that makes it any worse, necessarily. Not saying that, but we don't, you know, they, they have a lot of names. And that way, if there's ever any, uh, DNR problems with them, they have another name for the same one, and there's no history of any environmental violations. But that's about all we have to say, as far as I know, and it's up to you guys, and we'll do the best we can if you should decide to stand behind our decision.
I think it's also hard to get the DPC to, uh, convince the DNR, they went down there many years ago, and they gotta have proper deed to the property, uh, is the reason they would have turned it down. Uh, it's, uh, we've had them where they found bad drainage wells and so forth, and they still approve them, and they're gonna close when it was passed, so, uh-
That's true, but, and I know exactly what you're saying, but we feel we're doing what we believe is right.
Right.
We've still gotta challenge them, I think, only if, give it a try, we may lose. If I lived out there, I'd be fighting.
Well, I was a vet man, I know how they work.
But I think we need support of Board of Justice, they've done-
Yeah, they've done one.
They brought us a recommendation, I think it'd be who's best to, because all of their attempts.
It's election year, too.
Yeah, it's real, it's real.
Well, I didn't mean you guys. Let me say it this way, our governor has been a heavy proponent of, and I'm not saying I'm either way on him, but he has pushed the hog law issue pretty heavily. And he's up for election, so I don't know if that could make any difference or not. Probably not, he's got a big war chest.
We're gonna run out of time, it's gotta be, what, fourteen days after, this date is October one, so it's do or die today for, for making a decision.
Do we need a motion then, to, under that effect? Well, I'd make a motion, at least, send it down to the DPC for a hearing.
A second, next motion.
Any other discussion?
We may lose, but I think it's worth fighting.
I think so.
With the, with the information that the Board of Justice brought to us.
At least you need to be aware of your information. At least we've got a lot of information, whether it counts or not, we'll find out.
Just looking at the flat map, and I drove around the lot area Saturday afternoon, just looking out across there, so what, not heard anything. It's gotten changed in my opinion when I hear all this-
If you drive around it in March, it looks a lot different in March.
Yeah, then you could put a boat in.
Just walk down that way and do a lot of surgery.
Well, thank you for supporting us. I, like you say, we'll do our best. I'd say probably they aren't against us, but I think you have to still try and do what's right, so, and I think that's the issue, is what's right.
Right, you have some aerial photos of that in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, spring photos.
You know, like I was saying, once patterned tiled, there's a dredge ditch, it's like-